Good afternoon and welcome to the special council meeting for budget review on February 10th, 2021. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with emergency directives, starting with 006 from Governor Sisolak and extended or amended by subsequent emergency directives. As a result, there will be no in-person attendance. Please see the posted agenda on these directives and amendments. Two items on the agenda may be taken out of order. Two or more agenda items for consideration may be combined, and any item on the agenda may be removed or related discussion may be delayed at any time. And I will call the meeting to order, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will begin with our first public comment period. Public comment during this portion must be directly related to an agenda item. Speakers are limited to five minutes in length, and as always, we ask people to be concise and civil in their remarks. Anyone wishing to make public comment may call in at this time. The phone number is 702-589-9629.
Yes, I have public comment.
Go ahead.
Yes, good afternoon, Council. For the record, Fred Volz, the proposed 22 operations and maintenance budgets reflect overly optimistic revenue while asking for robust expense growth. Even if the federal government helicopters in more money to local government, that funding source cannot be counted on to sustain the city's unmet needs or ever escalating increases in expensive personnel costs. The CARES Act bailout of airport operating deficits for a few years doesn't guarantee its financial sustainability as an enterprise fund. The extra maintenance fund is $8.2 million short, and the vehicle and equipment replacement fund is $8 million short of staff identified needs. Our sidewalks and streets are in need of fixing but lack funding. Thus, the city is not flush with money. Franchise fee income from natural gas is projected to increase by 150% from the current year's actuals to fiscal year 22. Franchise fee income from telephone appears to be finishing current year at roughly $200,000, but only $100,000 has been budgeted for fiscal year 22. Cable television's franchise fee income looks to be roughly $90,000, but $125,000 has been budgeted for next year, even with a steadily declining customer base. The consolidated tax has been budgeted to increase over 50% from the current year, with no facts suggesting the economy will be rebounding to that extent, as protracted unemployment and business closures depress disposable income. Even unpaid property taxes are budgeted at zero, while the eviction moratoriums continue and landlords, as well as many homeowners, are financially stretched. While it is hoped detailed questions address the enormous increases in a wide variety of categories lacking justifications, keep in mind that many of the proposed expense line items have just been copied from years past, even if the money hasn't been spent or spent at a far lower pace than the budget. Perpetuating this slush fund mentality for another year does not serve our community. A complete explanation of the methodology and the total amounts being shifted by all the central services transfers to utility and a few other city departments needs to be part of today's discussion. Unfortunately, no one from finance appeared at last week's Utility Advisory Committee meeting to explain or answer the many committee questions about the operating budgets or the transfer methodology. For the utility department, there are various salary reimbursement charges different from the credits appearing in other department budgets. Similarly, the central services department has become the junk drawer for city expenses lacking department ownership. Another area deserving attention today is the wide range of year-over-year increases and decreases for group health costs from department to department, varying from a negative 10% to a positive 54.5%. Let's also look at selected staff additions. The finance operations coordinator duties equate to a secretary, not a technician, specialist, or supervisor. Last year, an assistant fire chief was added, whose responsibilities were to include training and compliance reporting. Now, FIRE wants to add another captain. How many do we have or need? It was four in 2019. The FIRE analyst duties can be done by other on-duty staff at the firehouse when they aren't training or out on calls. In personnel, the enormous cost of changing a part-time assistant to full-time suggests more part-timers or searching for a competent software module. The city clerk should be digitizing ex-employees' files, not personnel. Last area to highlight is EMS charges. The city does not charge swimming pool users, golf course users, or organized recreation class users a fully burdened cost. Why squeeze sick people for more money because other communities do? As many as seven FIRE employees show up to a call, why wouldn't two paramedics supply emergency treatment then transfer to a local hospital? Who's left in the fire station to fight fires or answer other EMS calls when up to seven people appear for one EMS service call? And I would ask that these comments be added to the record verbatim. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, this is our initial public comment period. Anyone wishing to call in with public comment, the phone number is 702-589-9629. Madam City Clerk, were there any emails or voicemails? None, thank you. Again, this is the initial public comment period. Anyone wishing to make comment during this period may call 702-589-9629. All right, hearing no others, we will close the initial public comment period and move to our agenda item number one for possible action, presentation, discussion, and staff directive. Ms. Pelletier.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Diane Pelletier, Boulder City Finance Director. I would like to make a correction to the agenda before I talk about my presentation. On number two, we have a possible action, presentation, discussion, staff directive regarding fiscal year 2020, 2021 proprietary funds, and it should be 21, 22. So, figured I'd point that out. These 20s are, you know, hard to get used to, I guess. Okay. So, I would like to show you that, and I can see you have them with you, but there will be two binders used for today's meeting, black one and the white one. And the white one will be the first binder we will go through, and that would be the governmental funds and general fund. So we'll have a PowerPoint presentation on that and hopefully explain it well enough so that you understand what we're trying to get accomplished on that. And then the second half will be another PowerPoint. It'll be on the enterprise funds, and that'll be the black binder. So the other thing I'd like to state, too, is all this information has now been added on the city website under finance. We've added a webpage 22 bullet under the finance. Okay. It's not working. So the goals of today's meeting is to present a clear picture to residents, council, and staff about the city's financial direction, and present summaries of revenues and expenditures, including personnel costs, and provide an overview of all the city funds, and request direction on the operations budget from the council. And this is not a capital improvement project meeting. That, other than the funding, there will not be an in-depth discussion of capital projects during today's meeting. Today is a meeting, not a workshop, so directions can be given to staff. So if changes are desired, please make a motion for council approval. And our strategic plan goals, we feel will be achieved with these budgets to achieve prudent financial stewardship, investment in infrastructure, manage growth and development, promote historic preservation, and sustain a high level of public safety services. And this is the organizational structure of Boulder City. It is a council, city manager, form of government. And I'd like to talk a little bit about projected revenue assumptions. So some of this was mentioned at the January 26 meeting when I went over the five-year plan. I kind of gave an update of where we are this year and where we expect next year to be headed. So the consolidated tax in the current budget, well, for the 2022 budget, will be $11 million. And right now, that would be in line with the 20 actual. We believe this number will even increase more once we get the figures from the state, but we won't be getting that for several weeks yet. Property tax revenues are budgeted to be like fiscal year 20 actual at this point. Room tax, we're still expecting to be low compared to what we normally would get in a regular year, so that's at 40% of fiscal year 20 level. And the new solar leases in fiscal year 21 will increase general fund rents over $1 million in fiscal year 22. So while everything else is either kind of remaining like fiscal year 20, maybe a little worse, this number, solar lease revenue, is expected to go up because we did get a new option exercised this year. And I wanted to include this tax rate comparison, because the Boulder City one, which is the first one, at 26 cents, will not be changing. These other figures may change. We'll get that information next week, but we wanted to present that as information that Boulder City's tax rate still remains quite low compared to everybody else. So as a reminder, at the January 26 council meeting during the five-year financial plan update, I stated that we were going to reinstate the currently frozen positions in the upcoming 21, 22 budget. These positions became vacant in the last half of fiscal year 20, and in order to assure the city would survive the pandemic, especially with all the unknowns we had last year going into the budget, these positions were not filled and funding for the current budget was removed. So as a reminder, these were not new positions. These were positions which happened to become vacant at a time when we thought we needed to save money, and we didn't know what was going to happen with COVID, so we needed to reduce our budget by, I think it was like 1.5 million, and this was an easy way to do it without, you know, furloughing people. But now, as workloads are getting closer to normal and revenues are improving, these positions will be needed to provide the city with appropriate service levels. So now I will turn the meeting over to our budget manager, Angela Manninen, to walk you through the highlights of the 21, 22 budget.
Hello. Okay. Start at the beginning. Where does the general fund money come from? So for fiscal year 22, we're expecting $1.9 million in taxes. This includes property taxes and room taxes. And like Diane said, we're expecting room taxes to be very low. We're only budgeting $200,000 when we received over $500,000 in fiscal year 20. License and permits of $1.5 million, intergovernmental of $11.3 million, which includes fuel tax and consolidated tax. And like Diane said, we're only budgeting $11 million for the consolidated tax at this point. But when we get the figures from the state in middle of March, we're actually expecting that to be higher. Charge for services is 3.9 million. Of that 2.3 million, whoopsie, same slide, of that 2.3 million is from the golf courses. That actually was reduced by $283,000 of green fees. That's going to move to the VERF fund that will support the five-year golf carts lease. So instead of the revenue going to the general fund, it'll go into VERF to support the golf carts. The court fines are about $433,000. Solar leases that go into the general fund are $13.8 million. Total leases are more closer to 16.8, but this is just the 75% that goes into the general fund. And then we plan to use fund balancing of $7.3 million with miscellaneous funding of $255,000. So total funding for fiscal year 22 for the general fund will be 40 million. Where does the general fund money go? So general government, which is a big chunk, just a lot of departments put together, so it's IT, it's HR, it's finance, it's city council, it's city attorney, it's just everyone basically that isn't the court, public safety, or public works or recreation, will be $6.5 million. Mini court is $920,000. Public safety is $14.5 million, with FIRE being 5.6, police being 7.2, dispatch being 1.2, and animal control being $450,000. Public works is $5.9 million. Recreation is $2.8 million. The golf courses are $3.5 million. And we'll have a transfer out to special projects, which is the general fund, CIP, fund of $3.6 million. And also other, which includes $1 million contingency and $1.5 million of transfers out to other special revenue funds. So a total expenses of $40 million. And I'm going to come back to this side later to discuss the transfers. So, starting with the general fund departments, the first one, the public works department is going to reinstate their four positions that were frozen due to COVID. It's the landscape maintenance position, sorry, landscape maintenance worker, a street maintenance worker, a technician inspector, and a design construction coordinator. Public works is still seeing savings by doing the, at least the management for CIP projects in-house. So current public works capital projects of $9.8 million have potential savings of $674,000. And that's, I know it's small, but it's a list of the projects and potential savings. Parks and Rec is actually 13 departments, and their annual increase is only $248,000. Of that is all contractual salary increases. So minimum wage is increasing 8% this year, so that's a large portion of Parks and Rec's budget increase, and also just the salaried employees' annual increases. This also includes golf courses management and maintenance contracts with Consumer Price Index according to contract. The IT department is seeing some increases this year. So one is the email archive system will be put in place, which is about $21,000 annually. We're moving C-click fix to be paid out of IT, because most of our software is purchased out of IT just for tracking to keep it consistent with other software programs, since about $5,000. The CAFER software program was actually postponed a year, it's about $15,000. Due to our vacancy with our accounting manager, we haven't, we pushed out implementing this. And then just IT's also annual increase in the VC3 budget, or contracting carries, sorry, not VC3 budget. So the police department includes public safety, dispatch, and animal control. The police will be reinstating their police department secretary that was also frozen during COVID last year. Also, to be compliant with more cops and crime prevention regulations, we'll be moving one police officer out of more cops into the general fund by June 30th, 2021. And the reason for this is you can't have the taxes for more cops and crime prevention and reduce your count of police officers in the general fund. So they support them, but you can't reduce the general fund and add these other officers. So to keep any of the funding for crime prevention or more cops, we have to have the original head count that was sworn in officers when the program started, which was 30. So, once we move this officer over to the general fund, we'll be compliant. This is also the second and final year of the dispatch computer replacements, which is about $16,000. And the animal shelter is going to have shelter management software, which is about $5,000, that will assist them with their presence online with lost animals and also The FIRE department is also reinstating their FIRE captain and FIRE analyst that were frozen due to COVID. These aren't new positions, they're just reinstated that were frozen. They're also re-implementing their community risk reduction program, which includes CPR for the public. They've been actively training their reserves, and for tracking purposes, they had an account added called the firefighter reserve account for tracking. And there's also ambulance fee structure change to be more in line with our costs for the ambulance fees. And I'd like to turn it over to the FIRE chief to discuss further.
Mayor and Council, excuse me. So I included a proposal to increase our fees. I think it was a five-page proposal, I think it's in your supporting documents. We looked at what we were currently collecting for an ambulance cost. We looked at what the regional partners were collecting, and then we did a study of what we believe it costs to make that ambulance trip. And our goal was just to set the price at or near what we were actually, what was actually costing the city for the cost. And so that's where you see the numbers in there. Another thing that we'd like to talk about, and again, I'd like some more time after this to talk about it, is adding a subscription program. It's something that's designed, sorry, it's something that's designed to help cover the cost of COFAs for people who can't afford them. And so a lot of cities have started using this with Firebase Transport. And what it is, it's like a $75 fee for an individual, 125 a year for a family if you choose to opt in. And what that does is when you, if you were to take an ambulance ride, you get the bill, it's sent to the insurance company, whatever portion they don't pay is waived for up to two transports per individual. And so where most insurances have either a 10%, a deductible, or a copay on it, the studies they've done show that even if you have one transport a year, it's going to save you significant money. And so, basically, the way it does is everybody that pays into this subscription program, it goes into a pool. And then, if Michael were to have an ambulance transport and his bill was $1,000 and his share was 400, the insurance pays the 600, and the 400 comes out of that pool. And so it's kind of like a sharing thing, and so it covers that cost. So it's really a good benefit to the community. Henderson's been using it for about 16 or 18 months. They're seeing about 10% of the people that pay in actually need it. It's paying for itself. And then the extra money that's raised in that, because it has to go back into that program, is used to do community CPR classes and first aid classes and different things to help reduce the risk in the community related to that EMS. So, the other thing we talked about when we talked with Henderson Fire, because that's who I visited with a lot, because they've been doing this, is when we have lower EMS fees in a community like ours where almost everybody's insured, I think 6.3% of the people aren't insured, all the ones that are insured, the real break is going to the insurance companies, because everybody else has to pay their copay already or their deductible, and some of our fees are less than standard deductibles, you know. So the real break, they're saying, is going to the insurance company. And so that's really what the goal would be, is to not be losing the money to them. Obviously, the goal is not to add any other burden to the community. We've also talked about creating a hardship process, similar to what we're using in the utility department. So for that 6% of the people that maybe didn't opt into the subscription program but that also couldn't afford to make the payment, they would go through that same process that utilities to determine if, in fact, they really had a hardship and what it was, and then they would be able to find a way to help them so that we're not harming people. So, like I said, it's a longer conversation. I'd be happy to meet with you between the next, now and the next budget meeting, if you could have some more conversation and really dig into it a little bit. So, any questions?
Questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. With regards to those in our, in the public who are uninsured, how does that work with the subscription model? I know we don't have all, but, you know, is it that, once they pay into it, and since they don't have any insurance to cover any of the additional costs, I mean, it's basically just that subscription?
So there's two groups. So Medicaid wouldn't qualify for the subscription program, but that's because there's no copay in Medicaid. So if someone has Medicaid, it wouldn't benefit them at all to be involved in it. And federally, I don't think they're allowed to be in it. So the people that don't have insurance would get, typically get a 20% discount on what their fee is. And so if the ambulance bill was $1,000, they get a 200%, no, $200 discount. It costs them $125 to be in it, so it's a huge benefit to have that. And again, it's totally voluntary. I think Henderson said in the 18 months they've had it, they've got 365 households and about 1,000 people involved in it, and it's been really successful.
It certainly seems like a very interesting concept, and I'm certainly interested in continuing that conversation.
The main purpose of it really is, is to help reduce the burden on the community. There's really not a lot of benefit for the FIRE department, because it's a small amount of money that just goes, it just funds the program. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't really bring a lot of benefit to us, other than the fact, like I said, it doesn't, it's helping the community.
Seems like it could also benefit those in the community with reducing the burden on them as far as costs go.
Absolutely, yeah. I'm a healthy person, but I'm going to sign up for it if we have it. I mean, it's just, it's almost crazy not to have it, I think.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, I asked a question that was asked earlier on the call. It talks about a transport call that requires seven personnel. How does that break down? Okay, three people show up, but seven are required for the process?
So every call that we run in the fire service is based off of risk. And so medical calls are broken down into five categories, essentially. And so if somebody falls and breaks their leg, the gentleman that called in is right, you need two people. That's a regular ambulance crew. But if you have a cardiac arrest, you need seven people, and that's because of, it's called pit crew CPR. Modern CPR, they want you to do fast compressions, they want you to do no more than two minutes per person, and they want you to rotate out and put a fresh person in there, because the higher quality CPR, the better chance you have of surviving. And so that's why they use seven people. They have one person that does all the charting, there's a person doing advanced airway procedures, there's someone that's doing the electricity, someone that's pushing the drugs, and you don't want, you don't want the person that's mixing the medicines to be doing other things, because they'll make mistakes. And then you have your CPR crew, and that's where that seven number comes from. That ALS2, or I believe that's what it's called in here, is ALS2, that's like 1% of our calls, so that's a really small number. But he's right, when we have a cardiac arrest, all seven firefighters that are on duty go to the call. I mean, that's because that's what we have to have. It's the same with when we get a battery wreck out of town, or we get a structure fire, everybody goes, and they're tied up until it's over. I mean, that's, that's the, that's the little problem that we have, I mean. So, yeah, so we don't send extra people just to send them. A lot of cities, where they have a private ambulance, they'll send five firefighters and the private ambulance company still get the seven people, that's how they still get there. Other places have four people per engine instead of, when I got here, we had two, we've moved people around, we have three on there now, and so they do different combinations to get the seven people there, so.
How frequently does that happen? Is that a couple times a year, or is that a more regular occurrence?
That seven are out of service, or that seven are on a medical call?
Seven are on a medical call.
On a medical call, it's about 1% of our calls, medical calls. I think we have about 1,300 medical calls a year, so.
Okay.
No, but it does happen more frequently with other calls, too. Like I said, the big car accidents, the fires, things like that, we see that more often, so.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, I was looking at that ALS2 at $1,200, and it's currently at $76,000.
There's a person doing advanced airway procedures. There's someone that's doing the electricity, someone that's pushing the drugs. And you don't want, you don't want the person that's mixing the medicines to be doing other things because they'll make mistakes. And then you have your CPR crew. And that's where that seven number comes from. That ALS2, or I believe that's what it's called in here, is ALS2. That's like 1% of our calls. So that's a really small number. But he's right. When we have a cardiac arrest, all seven firefighters that are on duty go to the call. I mean, that's because that's what we have to have. It's the same with when we get a battery wreck out of town or we get a structure fire. Everybody goes and they're tied up until it's over. I mean, that's, that's the middle problem that we have. I mean, so yeah, so we don't send extra people just to send them. A lot of cities where they have a private ambulance, they'll send five firefighters and the private ambulance company still get the seven people. That's how they still get there. Other places have four people per engine instead of, when I got here, we had two. We've moved people around. We have three on there now. And so they do different combinations to get the seven people there.
How frequently does that happen? Is that a couple of times a year or is that a more regular occurrence?
That seven are out of service or that seven are on a medical call?
Seven are on a medical call.
On a medical call, it's about 1% of our calls, medical calls. I think we have about 1,300 medical calls a year. So.
Okay.
No, but it does happen more frequently with other calls too. Like I said, the big car accidents, the fires, things like that, we see that more often. So.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, I was looking at that ALS2 at $1,200. And it's currently at $765.93.
Yes.
And I was a little concerned with that because there are some people that probably have heart attacks that can't afford to have heart attacks, but they do.
I agree.
So, but you are talking about different programs that you have, which I find interesting. So with the, that cost of the pool, what are you going, what is that pool going to be called? I mean, is there a special name for it?
In Henderson, it's called Lifelift. Other places, it's just, you put a local name on it. It's just an ambulance subscription program. And so again, the way they explain it too, they actually use a third-party vendor that actually runs it for them. We could do it ourselves, but it costs $3.50 per person that's enrolled to manage the program. So if it's $125 that goes in, out of that only $3.50 goes to management of the program. The rest just goes into that pool. And so I think between the hardship program and the subscription, I think the people that do fall into that group, and again, 6% of our community is not insured. So the other 93.5% wouldn't fall in that. But the ones that do, I think that would definitely catch those people so we don't end up having people, you know, like I said, have a heart attack and we make it worse by getting a big bill.
Since we only have 1% of the calls that usually have that seven, do you think it would be feasible to reduce that fee?
Totally at your discretion. I said, so what we did is we just went through and looked at it. You'll see that the BLS call actually goes down in cost because we were charging a little more than it actually costs, we felt, to do it. So we've lowered that one a little bit. That's just our recommendation to council based on what we believe it costs to do. We try to align it as close as we could to what it actually costs.
Okay, thank you.
You know, with these discussions about these fees and reviewing what you have in the packet as far as the actual costs, you know, I think we always need to keep in mind that people pay taxes. And one of the reasons they pay taxes is public safety, whether it's fire or police or EMS services. And then we come along later and say, you know, we're going to charge you more for that now. Do I understand that, you know, these are personal services that are provided to a person? Certainly. You know, fire services originally started out, I'm sure you're well aware, the private companies. And if you didn't pay, your house burned down. And if you did pay, they tried to put it out for you. So fire service over, you know, decades has evolved into a public service that is provided by communities. You know, looking at the figures that you have in there, it certainly appears that where the cost that's being charged to a person who requires transport or service is less than the actual cost of the service. But I think we always have to keep in mind that people pay taxes. They pay varying amounts of taxes, but they pay taxes. Comparing us to others, you know, I'm always leery about doing that. I think we should actually base things on actual cost rather than, you know, whatever the market may bear elsewhere. So I can see that where there may be an adjustment needed. You weren't specific, but it's been many years apparently since these fees were looked at.
2015 is what I believe I found.
Okay, so we're roughly into year six then, since the fees were looked at. And clearly, the cost of personnel, equipment, all of that has been increasing. You know, so I can see doing something like that. But once again, you know, we get into this trap of, well, you pay taxes and then we're going to charge you a fee that somehow equates to what the service costs. Well, what are the taxes paying for? So I'm a little bit leery about that. And as far as the other program goes, you know, if Henderson has, what did you say, about 1,000 people?
It's new, it's a new program. They've just been 18 months, but about 1,000 so far.
Yeah, and the population of Henderson, something like 340,000 people.
I believe it is.
So it's, and again, this is yet another charge. You know, you pay your taxes and then you pay this fee. You know, again, it's, to me, it's stacking fees on people. And if we're going to charge more, then we need to look at why we're charging more. And I'm just not in favor of these fee structures that just keep stacking up for different services. I understand the program. I understand why you may want to look at something like that, but people can obtain insurance as well, so.
Absolutely. No, like I said, our goal really coming into it was to try to make that program be not costing the city and not overly burdening the individuals. The whole idea of the subscription program is to help catch people who couldn't get, who can't get the insurance they need or can't afford it. It was a cheaper way, especially for people with medical needs, to be able to protect themselves. I mean, because nobody's going to, for $125, get an ambulance insurance anywhere. So this was a cheaper way to kind of cover those, some of those costs. So again, it's totally your guys' decision. It was just, you know, something we're trying to find a way to help reduce our cost a little bit so that as we're growing, we're not as big of a, you know, a burden on the budget.
Any other questions or comments? I'm not sure, Mr. Mays, how would you like us to handle each of these items as they come up? Thank you, Chief Gray.
As our finance director had mentioned earlier, you have certainly the opportunity at this meeting to provide direction on any of these items, but this is just the first meeting on the budget. We're going to have another budget meeting in March. If there is clear direction on items, obviously, providing that information to staff sooner versus later is beneficial. But we also understand this is a lot of material to go through. And as the fire chief mentioned, with some of these items, if there's more conversations that you'd like to have with staff to get a better understanding, there are opportunities exist to do that in between the meetings. And certainly, we can revisit this at the March meeting as well.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to make a recommendation on this item or hold it for a later time? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I'd like to hold it for a later time. I'd be interested in knowing in terms of insurance, when you talk about increasing ALS1 and 2, what regular person's insurance would cover? I think there are some questions about, people aren't paying out of pocket $800 or $1,200 for an ambulance visit.
Correct. And so my understanding is in the state of Nevada, none of the fire departments negotiate with the insurance for their fee. And in some places, back in Colorado, a city might negotiate with Kaiser and say, we'll transport all your patients for this cost. That doesn't exist in Nevada. So in Nevada, whatever the cost is set at is what the insurance company, that's how it's billed to the insurance. And then the individual pays whatever their agreed copay is. And so in Clark County, other than here for North Las Vegas Henderson, Clark County sets that wage and in all the other jurisdictions that adopt it, but the major, bigger cities over there, they adopt whatever Clark County does, and it's based off of the medical CPI. So again, it's not negotiated with the insurance. So I, and in fact, the numbers we included here were 2020 numbers. I got the 2021 numbers yesterday, and they're actually up about $100 over. So I think they're all about $1,200 a call. And so that's just set by the county. And like I said, the insurance company, that's what the insurance company gets billed. And then they just pay their portion of that. And so again, if a person has a 10% copay, they'd pay $120. The plan I had in Colorado, I had a $4,000 deductible. I've had one that had a $500 deductible. You know, whatever that is, is what you pay. Medicaid, like I said, has no deductible. And I heard Medicare has a small deductible. It doesn't matter what we charge here. Medicare has a set fee that they pay. I think it's typically about $479, that's what it was a couple of years ago. $479 is what they pay. And so, but again, that's not of the 1,200. That's what they pay. I mean, so you can bill them whatever you want. Medicare, Medicare will pay a certain amount.
And then the remainder is that just, that evaporates? The remainder becomes, goes back to the burden of the?
I'll have to get you that. I don't know that for sure. I don't know. My guess is that they're different than private insurers, that they pay what they pay. And then the insured person, there's a pre-negotiated amount that they pay also. So I guess they're different than private insurance. Private insurance is the one that we're primarily talking about, that we set the rate and that's what they pay. So yeah, I can write that down. We'll get more information to you. But again, I think it could be beneficial to meet if you, any of you would like to come to the fire station and sit down and meet, and we can go over this more in detail when we've had a little bit more time to talk.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to personally have more time to discuss the rates and the...
And then I know you're all aware, but I just wanted for the record to make it clear, all of our EMS fees we collect, they don't come to us. They go back to the general fund. So by us increasing or decreasing, it doesn't, doesn't directly affect us. Again, our goal is just to be good stewards of the city's money. And so it's not, we're not trying to raise the fees so we can buy a new HACs or, you know, that's not what it's for.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, I have a question. Have we ever looked at having a reduced amount for someone who doesn't have insurance? You know, if you have insurance, of course, like I have, it's going to take care of everything, but someone else might not.
I can definitely look into that. I don't know. I know there's some certain laws. As we were looking into this, there are certain laws, if you do business with Medicare, you do business with Medicaid, or you do business with private insurance, there's certain things you can and can't do. And with that hardship program, that's very, it's very strict that you have to have a very clear-cut program. It can't be kind of willy-nilly. You can't say you don't have to, you do, you don't. It has to be very clear-cut or it puts you in violation of those other entities. So I can definitely get that information, get you some more detail on it.
Yes, I'd like to look that up. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone who disagrees with holding this until a later time? All right, Chief Gray, again, thank you very much.
Sure, thanks.
So now we'll move on to administrative services. So which budget is going to increase next year? A couple of the items are a class and comp study and also recruitment costs of about $110,000. And also the desire to convert the current part-time office assistant to full-time, which annually would be $83,000, but her current salary is $18,000. So it'd be about $68,000 or $65,000. And to tell you more about this is Bryce Bolt.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Bryce Bolt, Administrative Services Director. On that one, the class and comp and recruitment, it's kind of a little placeholder that I did want to mention that class and comp RFP did go out yesterday. If we count our pennies and we have enough for this fiscal year, that number will change. And then recruitment, I wasn't quite sure where the dollars for the CA or the city attorney and the city manager will be. Probably this fiscal. And again, that'll impact that number perhaps. With regard to the part-time position, really, this request, I've made several fiscal years, and I'm happy to say I've made it this far this fiscal year, so that's great. The position really, the fundamental request is just to be able to take that division a little bit further in the technology. That requires really some resources, human resources, to first off, keep our daily work moving while really our analyst is able to address some of this interface. So the goal is digital from pre-employment to post-employment. And when a new employee, even when they do their application online, that those keystrokes should be able to go into our enterprise system and not be re-entered by personnel. But that, which we're doing pretty well, right, on the application going into our enterprise system. But it's really everything we do with respect to like workers' comp forms. We need to get those electronic and then be able to transfer that data into our enterprise system, to our third-party workers' comp, FMLA requests, where we're not re-entering data. But that takes, that takes the resource of interacting with that third-party, like Laserfish is where a lot of our forms are at, excuse me. And to take it from Laserfish to get that data into Munus, our enterprise system. Still takes someone to set up those forms and then where that data is going to go when it gets into the enterprise. And it's time-consuming, labor-intensive, and it never-ending. Because even once you do that, you have maintenance issues. So it's really what this position, I think, will help us in the technology and moving us forward in that efficiencies and being more effective. Can I answer any questions?
Questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, I was wondering, what is the salary per hour? So all the other expenses are insurance, retirement, et cetera?
Yeah, you'd have retirement, you'd have 4.4% is workers' comp, and then you have your health insurance.
And I was wondering how you derived the savings of $18,000?
That's current cost. Currently, there's $18,000 for the part-time position. So we are assuming the part-time would continue to be funded through the fiscal year, the next fiscal year. And if you got it up to full-time, I could offset it with that $18,000 that's already budgeted for that. You understand what I'm saying?
No, I don't.
So that we have $18,000. We have $18,000.
I'm going to be honest, no, I don't understand you because...
So the current cost of that part-time position is $18,000.
Okay, all right, I understand that. I guess you're saying that if you go full-time, then you don't have the part-time.
Exactly.
So I would have thought that the 18 would have been taken from the 83, and that would have been, not the savings, but the cost.
And actually, if, that would have been about 63, 64 would have been the cost into next year with that offset of the 18, you're right. Going forward though, it's 83 or 84.
Thank you for explaining.
Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. I was having just a little bit of difficulty following because it sounded like a lot of what is needed for this position is setting up processes kind of to, because it keeps, you know, you're talking about the digital sphere and setting up those processes, but eventually those processes are put in place, right? And so, you know, is that job, I know you said it continues on, there's maintenance needs and stuff like that. But as these processes get put in place, you know, the hope would be that then that workload finally decreases once that, once those processes are set up. So is this, is this something that seems that the thought is, is that once we get all these processes set up and established, that then we might have to reconsider the position? Or is this something that really, we really do see going on indefinitely?
Well, I really do see it going on indefinitely. The maintenance issues and then the technology changes, you know, in five years from now, what this, what we think is the utopia of software will be obsolete. And then moreover, just, we have, we've got all our current employees scanned in digitally, but our former employees is our next goal, and that's a huge, huge project. And that's very labor-intensive. That would be multiple years. I do understand your point that, hey, once we get this set up, we're pretty cool for a few years. But I think the maintenance ongoing and then obsolescence, with software go, it's obsolete or it's not supported anymore, we have to change. That'd be my concerns.
Thank you for clarifying that a little bit. Yeah, and then I, I too had a similar question with Councilmember Hoskins about, I wasn't quite understanding the savings of approximately that, you know, versus, but we're also talking about $83,000. But so I do appreciate the clarification on that. Thank you.
Anyone else? How many hours does the position use right now?
19 a week.
19?
Yes.
So you go from 19 to 40 hours?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Anyone wishing to take action or defer this? I guess that means it's deferred. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Bolt.
So continuing on, as you all may recall, last year, community development was going to bring in-house the building official, and this was postponed due to COVID restraints or just trying to save as much money as possible due to COVID. But we would like to go forward this year with bringing in-house the building official. And to talk more about it is Michael.
Prior to 2017, the city had a full-time building official position. In 2017, when that person left, the city utilized a third-party firm to provide building official responsibilities. As outlined in the memo that was part of your supplemental... As outlined in the memo that was part of your supplemental packet for the building official evaluation, we are bringing this to you again, because the third-party firm that is providing those services will be ending those services at the end of March. And so, as Angela noted, this was brought before you last year, but we were able to continue utilization of that third-party into this fiscal year to help with budget considerations. We have put together an assessment of providing these services either through the re-establishment of a permanent full-time position, or utilizing third-party, either at 20 hours or 40 hours per week. Beyond our obligations in NRS to have a building official to be able to enforce our building codes within the community, this position serves a vital role in serving our residents and our businesses, because this person is the individual that helps guide them through the building permit process. This person also oversees billing permit activities within the community and makes the evaluations and assessments to ensure that projects that are being built in Boulder City are meeting our code requirements. So as you can see through the assessment that we've provided, if we were to proceed with third-party, full-time position, it would be the most costly option. The full-time building official position is comparable to utilization of a third-party for 20 hours per week. We've provided the pros and cons of each evaluation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes. What is the salary per hour for this full-time building official?
Well, I have the annual salary at $101,311.
I certainly hope we go with a full-time one, because I think we need one, from what everyone is complaining about. That's just my opinion. And I don't agree on the cons, where in today's economic climate, it may be difficult to attract qualified candidates. I think right now, because of COVID, you might find several out there. But we'll know when you go out for it, if you go out for it. And a community is making a long-term commitment with a permanent position. We're not going to keep them forever, maybe, so I don't know if that's really a true statement or not. But it certainly is better to do with a full-time building inspector than to go to the third-party with 40 hours, or even with the 20 hours. But could you tell us how many hours has the building inspector put in on a, say, in a 12-month period?
The current position?
Yes, sir.
It's approximately about 34 hours per week, it's not full-time.
And that's at $140 per hour?
No, that is a different contract. That contract currently is $85,000 per year. And that, as the slide notes, will be offset, depending on which direction the council goes with this position, because we will no longer be paying that cost.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Holder?
Thank you, Mayor. I would ask, what, sorry, I'm trying to think of how to phrase this. What, have we seen, what kind of inspections are keeping the building official most occupied? Is it new builds versus remodels, or commercial versus residential? Do we have anything that would indicate that?
Well, not so much with the inspections, because how we're structured right now is the building official serves as the point of contact to our customers, answers questions, does preliminary reviews, meets with customers to help guide them in the right direction of the types of improvements and permits that would be required. Where they spend most of their time, though, is actually with our residents. Many of the permits that the city receives on an annual basis is what we refer to as owner-builder. NRS allows a property owner of a residential property, where they live at that residence, to serve as their own general contractor. And as a result, this requires a lot of back and forth between the building official and that resident to understand the codes and what's requirement, the requirements are for those improvements. So I would say that is where this position spends a lot of their time. And then in addition to that, it's overall management of the building permit process overall, both with residential and commercial.
Right now, we do have a development happening with over 100 homes. Is that seeing an increase in his activity due to that development particularly?
You know, certainly in the terms of single-family home permits, yes. But interestingly, in terms of overall building permit volume, we've been fairly consistent over the last 10 years. There is a lot of permits for home remodeling or replacement of equipment in a house that would require a building permit, and that's where a lot of the activity occurs.
I know previously, we had spoken about having to build the, like other agencies do, to have like an install of a water heater, have a picture taken and sent in. Is that something that's changed, or has that been done?
With the beginning of the pandemic, just like every other jurisdiction, we were looking at ways to address the needs of our customers when they weren't able to come physically into our offices and to protect employees that are going and doing inspections. Where that is most beneficial is in communities that are much larger than Boulder City, because the distance of travel between inspections is reduced when an inspector can view that from a camera on a phone. There are limitations, though, with inspections that make it hard sometimes to be able to ensure that the improvements are meeting code. Where that would be more beneficial is through our inspection process. With the building official, since the majority of their time is spent in the office, serving our customers, answering calls, meeting with our residents, that would be more impactful from the inspection aspect. And right now, we use a third-party firm to provide all of our inspections. Now, what I anticipate with the building official position, and what we have been implementing over the last couple of years, is if we have a day with only a handful of inspections, instead of bringing in that third-party firm to do those inspections, the building official does it, because then they have the time to do that and still serve our customers. So this is another way to leverage the position so that it's financially beneficial to the community.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I have two, two questions about, first of all, when you talked just now about on a day where a building official could go out and do inspections, is there the same licensing or certification process for the building official as an inspector? Are they interchangeable pieces, so to speak?
Yeah, they're interchangeable from the standpoint that sometimes the building official and the inspector have the same licenses. But the expectation is that the building official has many more licenses. We're expecting this individual to oversee all permits and all aspects of permits within the community. And so the pinnacle is hiring somebody who is a master code official. They have the most experience. But certainly, my expectation is to hire somebody with significant number of certifications.
Okay. And it also sounds like a benefit of hiring someone is sort of relationship-building. I mean, there are only X amount of homeowners and people who are doing those kinds of remodels on any kind of regular basis to be able to go in and see the same person and have developed the relationships. And also, I noticed you talked about institutional knowledge and how things are done in Boulder City. So I can definitely see the benefit of having, as a full-time employee, as opposed to a third-party. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
I'll just, I'll just add on to the comment that I agree, since there is so much, since you said the majority of the interaction is with our residents, I think having that in-house is certainly to our benefit, rather than a third-party where, you know, might not necessarily be sure, you know, where that relation or connection is. And I think having that in-house allows for that, that better communication, because that's going to be the most important thing with, with a lot of these individuals, because there's obviously going to be, you know, disagreements or, you know, differences of opinions sometimes with what they think they can do or can't do. And so I think it's, it would be a benefit, I think, moving in-house, certainly.
Anyone else? Councilmember Holder?
Thank you, I just had another thought. I wanted to clarify. So can I just, I know you've told us before, I just wanted to get it all on sheet. For third-party right now in community development, we have a third-party that does our solar inspections, that's paid through solar. The building official is third-party, our architect is third-party, is that as well, right, that does the planning review?
Not an architect, but yes, somebody that supports that function is, does plan review as well.
Okay, and then what do we currently have in-house?
In-house, as it relates to supporting the function of our building permit process, is a building permit technician and an individual who oversees the building permit processes. So two positions. And technically, with the building permit technician, that position also serves as support staff for the rest of the community development department.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Anyone wishing to take action on this request? Silence means deferral. Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, I would like to take action. From a financial perspective and also in terms of relationship with community and institutional knowledge, I'd like to see this position go forward.
Please put that in the form of a motion, then?
Okay, I would like to move that we go ahead and replace the current person and hire a full-time building official.
Anyone wishing to second that?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay? Motion carries 3-2. Thank you, Mr. Mase.
Hi. So, moving on to other general government changes. So finance also reinstated their position that was frozen due to COVID, which is a financial operations coordinator. The city's clerk's budget was reduced by $120,000 due to the election cycle. And this isn't just brought up to say kudos, yeah, the city clerk's budget went down. But as a reminder, next year, we'll need to bring the money back for elections. And the one position that was not reinstated from the COVID freezes is the special projects position that was under the city manager. So by not bringing this position back and other cuts in the city managers, but it was reduced by $160,000.
Madam City Clerk?
I'm sorry, Angela, I won't be bringing it back, because, well, some of it will come back, but not that full amount, because as we know, we have transitioned to even years. We'll have to put a small amount back for any ballot questions, but it would be significantly less.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So continuing on to RDA changes. Also, last year, when we had the unknown of how hard our revenues would be hit with COVID, we had moved 25% of the community development director's salary to be paid out of RDA. We are going to move this back to the general fund, as we're seeing that general fund can afford his complete salary. The only other change in RDA is there's four CIP projects in there this year. And we're not going to talk about the CIP projects, because this is just an operations meeting. But I want you all to know that there's funding in RDA for these requested projects.
Before you go on to the next subject on RDA, what is the projection as far as revenue this year?
Off the top, it is, it hasn't taken a hit. Like, it's very minimal, it's in trend. We did reduce it just to be conservative, conservative with it. But overall, we're seeing 8% reductions. We're not seeing real reductions in impact, property taxes, we're seeing a 7% increase. So we're being frugal, and we're going back to 2020 actuals for everything. But really, we're not seeing reductions like we were expecting to.
The RDA is funded with differences in property tax?
Well, RDA is a specific, there, sort of, the, it is property tax basis on a calculation, but...
There's a baseline that was set years ago, and any increase, but it is strictly property tax. It's not a mixture of sales tax or...
No, RDA is strictly the property tax that's allotted for RDA.
Okay. Mr. Mase, did you have something?
Just to clarify, the projected revenue for a budget year '22 is at $785,000. That would come in for the RDA funds. And maybe for the public's benefit, the purpose of the RDA is to encourage reinvestment. And so when an RDA is established, an RDA district is established, there is the base tax revenue that is coming in to that area. And for Boulder City, that is pretty much most of our commercial properties and some residential, when it was established in 1999. As investment occurs within the RDA, that increment above the base is what's pooled together to use those funds to encourage additional reinvestment. The objective being that the end of the life of the RDA, through those incentives and investment that occurred in that district, all the taxing bodies would benefit from it at its conclusion.
Thank you.
So moving forward to our full-time equivalent FTE count. So if it goes through with the two requested positions and the one removed position, our head count would increase by one. So it'd go up from 193 from last year to 194 with 12.8 employees, which are our perceivable employees, which currently count as .8 of a position. So it just goes through the different departments. So the change would be the elimination of one position in city manager, the increase of one position in personnel from the part-time assistant to a full-time assistant. And also, the one increase of the building official inside community development. So this would bring our account up to 193 current, 12.8 part-time perceivable employees, the two new positions and the removal of the one position, so our account would be 206.8. And again, so with benefits, the annual cost of the building official would be $153,000. And with benefits, the annual cost of the office assistant would be $83,000. So earlier, I said we were going to come back to this slide. So where the general fund money goes, so if you see down on the bottom, there's asterisks next to the 3.6 million for special projects and the 2.5 million... next to the 3.6 million for special projects and the 2.5 million for other. We're transferring 5.1 million to special revenue projects or special revenue funds, which includes the 3.6 million to our special project fund. And then that other is 1.5 that's moving to the other special revenue funds and 1 million in contingency. So a total of the 5.1 million. So because we don't, there is a few reasons. There's an NRS rule that we are only allowed to move 10% of our funds from the general fund of our expenditures to a CIP or revenue stabilization fund. So in the past, that's what we've pretty much moved, is like 10% of our general fund expenses to our CIP projects. And then we couldn't do anything higher than that because there's NRS requirements. So this year, we don't have a tentative budget, so we're going to stay within 10% rule. We're going to move $2 million to the special projects for CIP projects. Currently, I believe the CIP coordinators, general fund, CIP projects are $682,000. So that would be budgeted, whatever the final CIP budget is approved, will be budgeted next year. And the remaining money of this $2 million would go into the unallocated account to be budgeted in future years. So it would either mean in future years, we don't move any money to CIP because it's already there, or if we had a really large project that was more than 10%, we'd have money sitting there available to be used. Also, I'm hoping you guys remember last year, we have by ordinance, a $2 million emergency capital reserve for the general fund. We've had it. We didn't always utilize the special projects fund, the CIP fund, until about 2018. Everything was just in the general fund, so that reserve was in the general fund. So last year, with the 10% rule, we were able to move 400,000 of it to the special projects fund. So if there was an emergency, we could use it. And this year, with the 10%, we're able to move the rest of it. So the whole $2 million in the future will be in special projects to be used in case of emergency for capital projects. Hoping that makes sense. At one time. It'll just be there available for use in the future. So that's between the 1.6 million and the 2 million. That's the 3.6 that's moving to special projects. We're moving $495,000 to VERF, $250,000 to extraordinary maintenance, $150,000 to compensated absences, and $638,000 to risk management. Of the risk management money, $388,000 is our pool pack insurance. So just for transparency and to keep everything related to insurance and risk management, we're transferring the money there and we're going to pay for our insurance costs there. And then the other 250 is just for risk management potential costs. And so this is just going over again. The emergency capital reserve, so a large portion of the capital reserve is in the general fund currently. That prevents us from being able to use it in the future in case of emergency. And the reason we didn't move this money previously is because of the NRS 10% rule. We were unable to. And now for the fiscal year '22 budget, we'll move the remainder so it's accessible in case of an emergency.
Any questions? Comments? A question I have is if the money does get moved in there and we call this a special projects fund, are there any restrictions on the use of that money?
Yes, it's your CIP budget that you approve every year. So in order for that money to be spent, so there's a two parts to that question. Any money has to be spent, has to be budgeted. That $2 million, that's going to be our capital reserve sitting there. So a capital project fund, which our special projects fund is, is the only fund that's allowed an augmentation of fund balance. So if we keep this in the general fund and we have to use it, we can't access it unless we budget it. So with it being in the special projects fund, if something happens and we have a street blow up and we have to repair it immediately, we could go to that $2 million and with an augmentation, which we'd have to list in the paper and do the whole process of an augmentation, we'd still have access to that money to be able to use it for that emergency. But all the other money that goes in there, it needs to be budgeted to be able to use, either by an augmentation or through the annual budget process. Like, we can't spend it without the proper procedures.
Okay. So as an example then, it could not be used, if we were to identify a personnel need, it could not be used for something of that nature?
If you identified a person, no, because it's for capital projects. And so I don't, so your personnel need, if it's because our revenues came in lower than expected, we have the revenue stabilization fund, but that would be our only fund available for a personnel need besides our standard budget or our annual funding that comes in.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? All right.
Okay. So currently, all the governmental fund operating reserves are currently fully funded. The NRS maximum required for, and this is maximum, not minimum, for a general fund is 16.67%, which is two months. And the general fund is way over that. With this budget that's being presented today, it would still be at 21% without any additional unexpected revenues, which we are expecting consolidating taxes to be much higher. And also without using the contingency of $1 million, it would go up to 26%. So it's much higher than this maximum of 16%. And all the other government funds that have employees have a minimum 20% operating reserve, and those are also all fully funded.
A question I have on these funds that have been set up now over the past few years, they're all now fully funded then, is that correct?
All our operating reserves are fully funded. Our, none of our special revenue reserves are fully funded. One, our revenue stabilization fund is getting close. It's coming on the next slide. But no, none of them are currently fully funded.
Okay, so things like the VERF fund, those are not fully funded?
No, there's funding in them available, but they are not fully funded.
All right. Thank you.
So the cap balances of the recently created special revenue funds, the risk management fund, the cap is 10% of the general fund prior year expenditures, and it was about $20 million last year. So 2.9 million is the cap. The revenue stabilization and natural mitigation fund, cap is the same thing, the 10% of the general fund prior expenditures. So this is the only one that's really close to being fully funded. Compensated absence fund, this cap balance equals a total liability leave, which is currently about $3.6 million. Extraordinary maintenance, repair and improvement of capital asset fund is 5% of capital assets of the general fund, which is about $10 million. And vehicle equipment replacement fund, also known as VERF, is also the 5% of the capital assets, which is about $10 million. So this chart kind of shows where we're at in funding levels of the special revenue funds. So currently, revenue stabilization, which is growing quicker than the other funds because we haven't had a natural disaster or any need for revenue stabilization as of yet. Currently, well, as of 12/31, the balance in it was 2.5 and the cap is 2.9. The risk management, as of 12/31, was 1.8 and the cap is 2.9. And compensated absences had $1.9 million with a cap of 3.6. The extraordinary maintenance had $1.7 million with a cap of 10.1. And VERF has $2.1 million with a cap of 10.1. So in VERF currently, even though they had vehicles to be replaced this year and also the ambulance, so part of that 2.1 million is vehicles that are set to be replaced but haven't moved forward because of the pause in CIP. So that 2.1 million, I'm expecting it will go down once the vehicles are allowed to be replaced in that program starts moving forward again. Does anyone have questions before I?
The expectation, I would say then, on the VERF fund is it's never going to be fully funded. I mean, some of these, as you mentioned, with the rate stabilization, if we don't have anything catastrophic occur, then that money is essentially a savings account for us in the event of something of that nature.
As natural disaster or if we weren't able, like we were, to get through COVID. Like, if COVID lasted more than one year or multiple years, we probably would have to...
Or if the feds didn't come in with some printed money and that sort of thing. But the VERF fund, we know we're going to replace vehicles pretty much every year.
Yeah, and the plan is for those large vehicles, such as fire vehicles, that are very expensive, is to put funding in there. So when those vehicles come up, the funding's sitting there and it's not a shock.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So governmental funds, all funds are currently positive. We are transferring $3.6 million to the special projects from the general fund. And again, 1.6 of that is the emergency capital reserve. We're transferring $2.7 million of voter-approved capital improvement fund. 1 million goes to the special projects fund for general government infrastructure and 1.7 million goes to utility projects. The staff will increase from 205.8 FTEs to 206.8 FTEs. And those numbers do include the part-time perceval employees, with the new positions being the administrative office assistant and the building official. And this budget does include the contractual salary increases, including step increases.
And the transfers to the capital improvement fund, the source of that money is?
The transfers to the special projects fund.
You've got, you list two transfers there, special projects fund and the utility projects?
Yes.
And the source of the revenue?
It's coming from voter-approved. They both have, well, there's three different ballot questions involved with that. One is the $1 million that's annually for city's infrastructure. That's what's going into special projects fund to be used for city infrastructure.
Again, the source of that revenue?
Is solar lease revenues and land sales.
Okay.
And then the utility projects, 1.7 is the 500,000. That was a ballot question for utility infrastructure. '22 will be the last year of that. And then also, it's the land sales for Storybrooke that was another ballot question. So that's again voter-approved for utility capital.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking is, these aren't, well, with the exception of the 1 million from the lease revenue, the other revenue is, only comes occasionally. It depends on the situation. So for instance, the land sale provides that money, but there's no anticipated land sale right now for next year. So that money would not be there. That money would not exist.
No. Are you talking about the additional money for the utilities?
Yeah.
It's the Storybrooke, the third phase.
Right. So again, if there's no land sale, then there's...
They'd have to push back those projects.
Okay.
Those sales are currently in the rate study as expected because it was a three-year plan, so it wasn't unplanned that those, that wouldn't sell the third phase.
Right. I mean, that portion is planned, but that plan is now ending with the anticipated sale of the third phase of the...
And that's the proceeds of that. So this will be, yeah, so going forward, that won't exist.
Just for clarification, are you thinking that all land sale monies go to utilities?
No. What I'm getting at is when we look at this 1.750 transfer, that's not going to happen after the...
I think that sun sets in '22, right?
The 500,000 does.
The 500,000 does. And then there's the last leg of the Storybrooke, 2.9 million, which will be reserved for utility capital projects. But then after that, there are no land sale monies slated to be used for utilities.
Right. And again, what I'm getting at is back in 2010, when the voters approved the sale of what's now Boulder Hills, that was the deal in that ballot question, was to transfer that amount of money to this type of fund. But once that land is sold, then that ballot question provisions have, it's done. It's over with. And what I'm getting at is next year, we can't expect the same amount of money to be transferred because it won't exist.
That's true. That's why it's important to have the rate study done and plot out what the capital needs are to make sure the city or the utility funds have the adequate funding to take care of their capital needs.
Or projects get delayed or modified or... Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Keep going. Okay. So this wraps up the government portion of the budget meeting. This is the calendar for the budget adoption schedule. So today's February 10th, and this is our first meeting. Citizen meeting for the operations portion of the budget will be February 24th. March 10th will be a combined operations and CIP meeting. We were hoping for tentative approval of the CIP, but do not believe that will happen at that meeting. On April 15th, I'll file the tentative budget with the state. The April 28th meeting was a tentative meeting in case it really was a placeholder due to everything that happened with COVID last year, we had to keep redoing the budget. This was a placeholder in case anything happened again this year. So if we don't need that meeting, it's just on your calendars just in case we have you in case of emergency.
You had mentioned early on that you expect to get some additional information from the state regarding the current...
It'd be in March.
Okay. So by the, what I'm getting at is by April 28th, it's a reasonable expectation we would have that money?
We would have their estimate, yes.
Or maybe not the money, but yes, the estimate. Okay. And the reason I point that out is that meeting may very well be necessary depending on what the state has in those figures for us.
True. Very true.
Thank you.
And then May 15th, we publish notice for the budget hearing, which occurs on May 25th during the regular council meeting, which would be the adoption of the final budget, adoption of CIP, adoption of pay classifications and FTEs. So it's very important at that last, and then on June 1st, I submit it to the state. So at that last meeting is your final adoption, but there's really no time to make changes after that meeting. So at that meeting, I would present you the final budget in hopes that you would approve it because five days is really impossible to change it and then get it back to you to be able to send it to the state.
Which again, may be even more reason to keep that February, or excuse me, April 28th meeting as a possibility.
See on the next meet on the 10th to see... Yeah. Does anyone have any question on the government funds before we move on to proprietary?
I do have some suggestions, and I don't know if you want them now or...
If they're related to government funds, yes.
They are. The first one would be an increase in the council budget of $1,000. The city participates in the civilian military council at Nellis Air Force Base. It is a group of all local governments, county and cities, along with the air force. The group has been in existence since 1957. And what that group does is meet quarterly usually to discuss any issues that may impact Nellis or that Nellis may be working on that might impact any of the governments. A decision was made last year to move away from a model that raised funds on, by holding lunches. And that then puts the operation of that onto the communities. So I would ask, I would make a motion to approve $1,000 be added to our, what is it, pub subs and something category?
So is this for a luncheon?
No, it would be dues. We've gone away from the lunch model to dues.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Another suggestion that I would make is for entry signs into Boulder City out of the special projects fund. I believe the cost of these signs would be less than $50,000, so it wouldn't be considered as a capital improvement.
So anything in special projects is CIP? You're talking about doing it in one of the operation budgets then? You wouldn't use special projects for something operational?
Here comes Mr. Luttrell, who's going to advise me of how this works.
Well, I'm not going to tell you how it works.
Well, I'm not going to tell you how it works. Keegan Luttrell, Public Works Director, for the record. This is something we've actually already been looking into, and yes, you're correct. We don't think it's going to fall into the, the special projects fund, that it won't meet that $25,000 threshold. Staff believes, well, we've got a couple ideas, but staff believes that we'll be able to do most of the work in-house, be able to purchase the materials and get this accomplished through operating funds. So if you want to add some money to it, staff would be greatly appreciative of that, because they were having to scrimp and scrape from other areas to, to try to produce these signs.
Well, again, I, I think it's a very significant thing for our community. The idea, and I have discussed it with the assistant principal at the high school, we don't have anything that, that talks about the Boulder City Eagles. And I, I think something like that is important for our community. Been told we have 125 athletic championships for Boulder City, and you certainly wouldn't know that unless you found the right person to ask, I guess. Mr. Mays had also suggested, we have a sign, thank you, Public Works, for going out and straightening it up a little bit. But there is a sign out at the entry to the town at Veterans Parkway that notes the organizations here in Boulder City. And again, I think having something that would be a little more prominent, a little more distinguished is something that the community can benefit from, as well as the organizations that do such great work here in Boulder City. So I'm more than happy to make that motion then. We're talking then, what, $25,000 range?
Yeah, it should be for, we're talking about the two organization signs, because there's one coming up the hill and one coming into town. That was the one I was first referring to, that staff believes that we can pretty much construct all of that in-house. That's going to be nowhere near 25,000. But then the, the entry sign, we're still working on estimates and ideas for that. Originally, we were looking at some of the signs, like when you go into the park, the big concrete signs, but it would have to be substantially larger than that, as you're doing 45 or 50 down the highway. We don't know how far off the highway we're going to have to sit, so we don't have an exact estimate on that. But yeah, we believe that'll be under 25,000 also.
Okay, and, and again, we know it probably cannot be very close to the roadway because of end dot restrictions right, right of way.
Yep.
So it has to be large enough to be seen if it's going to be distinguishing our community. So this would then be an augmentation to the public works budget?
Yeah, the street staff would be able to handle most of that.
Okay, well, I will make a motion then to increase the public works budget by $25,000 towards the construction of these entry signs.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
I have one question, and just, just for clarification in my head, and, you know, because I keep hearing signs, but I also, you know, when I hear concrete and stuff, are, are we really talking more installations, if you will? Or is it, are we talking?
I, I guess the term that I've heard is the monument sign. That, that's at least the discussions that I've had with both residents and the high school. And the idea, of course, is to let the high school have input on what they would like the sign to look like.
I think monument sign, to me, makes it more clear exactly what we're trying to consider, and I just wanted to get that in my head before we go ahead with the vote.
No billboards?
Perfect.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Another recommendation that I would like to make is the addition of an employee that would provide clerical support for both the city clerk's office and the city attorney's office. Up to them as to how they want to do that. The work would primarily be for the city clerk's office. And as I say, it would be essentially a clerical or paralegal-type position. Madam City Clerk, any comments?
We have a, we had a part-time, a person that was assisting us, but that was mostly for our records program, and that's all she did all day, every day. She, so that position is vacant, but yes, we, the city clerk's office is in need of more employees. Throughout the last few years, I have discussed that in our budget processes. And just due to the situation with the budget, I got shot down round one. So it, that person would be, would just be because of the priorities. You know, there were several other priorities, and so that would be very, very helpful. And because there is a lot of work to do. And with respect to, like a paralegal, did you have something specific in mind?
Well, it seems to me that the functions of your office and the office of the city attorney requires some type of legal understanding. You know, it, it may not be something where a person has attended specific coursework for that or obtained a degree in that type of thing. But I, I think that that's the type of background that would probably best serve both offices.
Agreed.
Any other questions or comments? And again, I, in addition to what Madam City Clerk has pointed out, what I see in that office is a great deal of public service to the community. They are often the first stop for residents, or at least are often directed to that office. So that, that's also part of my thinking, in addition to the filing, the data entry, the records-keeping. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Folda?
Yeah, I just missed it. Did you say part-time or full-time for that position?
Full-time, again, they, they've had a part-time position, or at least have used one in the past. My intention would be for a full-time position.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hoskins?
Do we have any idea what the cost would be?
So you saw what Bryce's office assistant was, $83,000. I don't know if they'd be the same classification, I'd need more information. We'll dig into it deeper. I have a question. There is a part-time person, would they stay or they?
That person is no longer with, with the city, and we would re-recruit for that. And I had already talked to Bryce for that, about that, but I would say if it was a full-time position added, we'd eliminate that.
Yes, it would be, I mean, that's the intention, is the part-time person position that's been listed often for the city clerk's office would be replaced with a full-time position.
I will look into the cost of that and bring it back at the 10th meeting.
All right. So we will defer that request then until the next meeting. All right? I had also discussed in previous meetings the potential of having community gardens created at different parks around the city where they might be appropriate. Again, either Mr. Mays or Mr. Luttrell, have you looked into this as far as cost? Or Mr. Hall? Put you all on the spot.
While they're talking. Certainly, as part of the inquiry during the CIP process, staff did look at a couple of potential locations. I believe we don't have cost estimates yet, but we can prepare cost estimates. One of the things that was staff's evaluation or response to that inquiry is where these community gardens could be located that would already be supported by utilities, because naturally, water would be a key component to that. One of the suggestions was Veterans Memorial Park along Buchanan, where there is an existing water line that could support that location. But if you have particular locations in mind, what staff can do is for the March 10th meeting, come back with cost estimates to advance those community garden proposals.
All right. Any other councilmember Folda?
Thank you. I would suggest, my suggestion for where the locations would be, would be more in the neighborhood parks where they're accessible by walking. Most of the people who access veterans are, are driving there. So it would be, to, to have a true neighborhood garden where people could access by walking to our smaller parks, like on Fifth Street or Oasis, not Oasis. Yeah, Oasis is one, I'm trying to think of the one off of?
There's Del Prado Park?
Yes, Del Prado Park.
Pretty small, but yes.
So if there's utilities, maybe in those locations, if we could identify them.
Yeah, and certainly with your suggestions, we can look both at utility availability and programmable needs for those parks, how are they used today, and the ability to accommodate this.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Yeah, I'll just add that, because I, I've heard a similar request or discussions from, from members of the community who either can't get a spot in the gardens and, you know, think that, you know, would like to see more availability. And I think, and there's also the, not necessarily complaint, but, you know, yes, the desire for having, as Member Folda pointed out, closer within the neighborhood areas that are close to their home that, that they can do rather than having to, you know, go across town, because they might live down, further down Georgia, say, or something like that. So I think, you know, at least looking into this is certainly would be a benefit for the community and something I've heard of, and I think keeping it neighborhood-focused is, is certainly something that we should be considering when possible.
Anyone else? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I have a question, the source of funds. I noticed at the park, I'm turning around, over here, for example, there's a tic-tac-toe thing that's broken, you know, things suffer the weather here. What is the process when, when there's pieces need to be replaced? Is that in the budget? Where in the budget is that? And is there a regular process for maintenance on that equipment?
I'm going to defer either to our Public Works Director or Parks and Rec Director to answer the question.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Roger Hall, Parks and Recreation Director. I'll remove my mask now, thank you. So basically, the process is if we get a comment from a, a community member of a park that's broken, they notify the Parks and Recreation Department, and we take care of the, the repair. If the repair is big enough, then I put a work order into Public Works after we buy the part, and then we install, Public Works installs the part, as per the work order. The, the money usually comes out of our budget. And knock on wood, we don't have very many, you know, replacement. I'm, I'm not aware of this one, but I'll put a work order in, we'll check it out and get that repaired. So, but that's how it normally is. Public notifies us, we, we put a work order in if we can't do it ourselves, and we order the part.
Okay, is there ever a process of upgrading equipment, I mean, after so many years, or is it evaluated?
Yeah, we evaluate the equipment every year, actually. And we're currently doing a park master plan where we have evaluated each park, and we'll be bringing that to the Parks and Rec Commission in the next couple of months, and then it comes to city council for approval. There'll be an evaluation of our 17 parks, including gazebos and picnic tables and playgrounds and that type of thing. And there's a national standard that the National Parks and Recreation Association makes a recommendation that gazebos should last 15 to 20 years, and so we, we have that standard as well. So you can see what, where we, where we fit into that standard.
Now, are those items already in a budget? Or would that be, say, that would have to go into the next round of budgets if it's decided that a gazebo needs to be replaced, or a certain equipment needs to be replaced, is that?
Yeah, the, I guess the thought of a master plan for parks is to look at the existing facilities and then make recommendations and use it as a budget tool every year to incorporate some of the money to make sure your infrastructure stays whole. And so that's the, the concept.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one other thing, and again, I believe Mr. Luttrell has at least considered this, our lovely verticals here in the city council chambers. You know, we're, we're almost at that time of day now where it's going to get abusive up here on?
I don't know what you're talking about. Yeah, staff is actually already looking into purchasing that, so it'll be done this fiscal year. We just got to find a good time to do it in between council meetings and budget meetings, so. Look for that to happen here in the new budget.
Yeah, I don't know what the depreciation schedule is on those, but I'm pretty sure we're past it.
We're going to put those on the surplus auction and see what we can get for them.
Good, good luck with that.
I know a few houses that might, that might work well-ish.
That's the end of my list. Anyone else? Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, we talked about the dog park, you know, and having a special place for the dogs to be off-leash. Have we done any more on that?
I, I know what my suggestion last time was, is that we seem to have an awful lot of fields that get very little use, and to look at an existing area for that purpose rather than expending money on a new facility. Anything, Mr. Hall, Mr. Luttrell, Mr. Mays?
Keegan and I got this.
We can move your seat up here closer if you'd like.
See, I'm the closest, so I can quickly get to the podium. So this is one of the items that was identified during the CIP workshop. And so as was discussed earlier with the timeline and moving forward, what we hope to do is at the March 10th meeting, come back and talk to the council about the CIP projects, that being one of them, so that the council can give us direction on how to proceed on those to ensure that those are incorporated into the budget process and give staff enough time to be able to respond to questions and, and revisions to any of those CIP projects. Certainly, you have the option to explore having a dedicated dog areas with the equipment that would be necessary to fence those in. An alternative is you designate certain areas of parks for the allowance of dogs and the activities during certain parts of the day and regulate it that way. One of the things that we were looking to do and, and have been hampered because of COVID was engaging in the community regarding potential dog leash laws. We are now moving forward with that public engagement opportunity at the beginning of March, and we're going to broadcast it live so that the public would be able to provide us input into potential dog leash laws. That could have a factor in the council's consideration on future improvements.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Mays.
Okay. If that's all, we'll move on to proprietary. And again, just reinstating what we said earlier. So the goals of today's meeting are to present a clear picture to the residents and council and staff regarding the city's financial direction, present summaries of revenues and expenditures, including personnel costs for the proprietary funds, provide an overview and summary of all city proprietary funds, request direction on operations budget from the council. And again, this is an operations and maintenance budget meeting, so although we'll discuss capital projects funding, we won't discuss actual capital projects. So the proprietary funds for the city are the airport, cemetery, and the five utility funds, so the admin, the water, the wastewater, the landfill, and electric. Proposed budgets for fiscal year '22 at the airport is $3.9 million. The combined utility budgets are $36.5 million, and the proposed cemetery budget is $175,000. So starting with the airport, the airport's reserves are currently fully funded. This includes a 20% operating reserve, so they have $167,000 in this reserve, and a minimum $250,000 emergency capital reserve. Where the airport money comes from. So in fiscal year twenty-two, we're projecting aviation fuel tax of nineteen thousand dollars, CARES Act reimbursable funding of eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. This will leave seven hundred thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-three. FAA grant matching of nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars, license and permits of five thousand dollars. Rents and royalties, um four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, which includes the ground leases, hangers, and fuel sales. Miscellaneous revenues of six thousand dollars and a use of fund balance of one point six million. So total funding of three point nine million dollars.
And when you have shown on their use of fund balance, what revenue is that?
So use of fund balance is, I'm gonna get to it on the next slide. But it's um a couple of things. It could be cash, or in the case of depreciation, it's your assets being depreciated. So in the case of the airport, um it's gonna be six hundred and seven thousand dollars in cash and one million dollars in depreciation. So that's where the one point six comes from.
Okay, but when, you know, and again, we use the same terms a lot. Uh fund balance is frequently used when we talk about the general fund, but this is not general.
No, this is absolutely just airport money.
Okay.
So every fund has their own fund balance, so airport fund balance.
Thank you.
I'll I'll add that going forward, because I could see how that could be confusing.
Thanks.
Um where the airport money goes, so personnel costs of five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, operations of four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, capital projects of one point nine five million, and depreciation of one million, bringing total expenses for the year at three point nine million dollars. So the one million depreciation does seem like a lot, um especially because we're reducing our our fund value by that amount. But the airport's very unique, that the FAA funds most of its structures. So the airport's cost of that one million dollar is only sixty-two thousand dollars. So although it looks like a very large, very large number, the airport's portion of it is very small.
And you know, th- this is an ongoing issue for me that uh we show this is where money goes, but depreciation money never goes anywhere, correct?
So it's more, I guess I should say where funding goes, because it does depreciate the airport. The airport is gonna, it's worth twenty million, now it's worth nineteen million. It is gonna reduce its assets, but its cash does not go down with depreciation.
Right, no one's writing a check for one million dollars to anything.
Mm-mm, and it's in an enterprise fund, so it's required by interest and other rules. And the reason for it is you want to make sure you're taking in more money to be able to cover your depreciation. You don't want to be using your fund balance for depreciation because it's showing you're not saving for a future, for when you have to replace these things. So it's a tool, it's misleading with the airport because of their funding sources, but it's still a very useful tool.
Thank you.
So airport revenues. So revenues for commercial ground lease and fuel sales are still low due to COVID impacts. Um this revenue is subsidized by the operational expenses reimbursed by the CARES funding, which will be eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars expected for fiscal year twenty-two. This will still leave seven hundred thousand of the CARES money available for fiscal year twenty-three. Um private ground lease, private ground lease and hangar lease rentals, rentals are stable and combined. Totals are slightly higher and increasing. Um expected FAA contribution to capital projects for twenty-two is nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So airport expenses. So the CARES funding reimburses the airport for allowable expenses, which is basically anything that you're allowed to purchase with airport revenue. So if it's airport-related, you're allowed to use the CARES funding for operational purposes. The airport operation expense for professional increased a hundred and ten thousand dollars, excuse me, due to potential legal fees. The estimated cash balance as of twelve thirty-one for the airport, oops, I'm sorry. The estimated cash u- use of fund balance for the airport is six hundred and nine thousand dollars. And the balance of the airport as of twelve thirty-one was one point two million plus the additional fourteen in reserves. So this budget going forward, the airport does have the cash available for it. And before I move on to utilities, do you have any questions?
Questions or comments? Councilmember Folda?
Yes, I just had a question about the um the legal fees. Um we had created an account.
So the enterprise funds, the risk management is for general government. The general government pays into it, the enterprises do not pay into it, so they have to cover their own legal fees. So airport can't use our general fund money.
And they don't have currently anything set aside for legal fees for the airport?
No, it's ongoing, so as they get the cost.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bridges?
Um I had a couple of questions about the airport. The, what is, oh, I'm sorry, that's cemetery. Uh the, there is a discussion right now about uh continuing to run our own fuel farm versus contracting out the fuel farm. I'm assuming these projected rents and royalties, that's assuming that we continue.
The fuel farm?
Fuel sales, fuel flow, uh storage, and so on.
They do, the fuel sales are very low projected for next year due to COVID. So even if something did change and they contracted out, the low revenue we're projecting, it, if something like that happens, it would not alter the airport's operations, if that helps.
Yeah, and. That does, let's see. No, that's it, thank you.
Is there, I I, you know, I noticed here we were talking about commercial ground leases and the and the fuel sales tax are still low. I mean, are there, is there currently money that's owed to this fund right now that's?
That would be the the commercial ground leases, and that's why we're budgeting so.
Gotcha, and then, and and do we have, you know, in- information about, you know, what the what the plan is or how we move forward from that? Or is it just kind of waiting to see how this happens? Because obviously, the impact of COVID is, you know, in certain areas, we might feel it for years to come. I'm just trying to understand.
It is a work in progress, there's a lot of discussions happening currently. I do not think anything has been finalized.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the airport fund? All right, thank you.
Okay, so continuing on to utilities. So the proposed budget for electric is sixteen million dollars, water is also sixteen million dollars, sewer is two point nine million, and the landfill is one point two million. So their combined budgets are thirty-six million dollars. Currently, the utility reserves are fully funded. So each one of all four of the utilities has a twenty percent operating reserve, which is very important because they are pay-go and they need to have cash available for large CIP projects. And they are currently funded at a minimum of twenty percent. Also, the admin fund has the emergency capital reserve and rate stabilization reserve, which are also also both fully funded. So I know this is hard to read, but this is the total utility reserves. Um like I said, all of the operating reserves are fully funded, the emergency capital reserve is fully funded, the rate stabilization reserve is fully funded. Um the bond, the water has the bond reserve of two point three million dollars that we needed for the prior um financing that is no longer needed that we'll actually spend this year to pay down debt. Um and then there's also the landfill closure reserves. So total reserves for utilities is about eighteen million dollars. So the admin fund for utilities. So the admin fund doesn't make any money, they don't do anything to generate revenue. Um there, it's funded by the four funds, the electric fund of one point seven million, the water fund of nine hundred and forty-one thousand, and the sewer fund of three hundred and fourteen thousand, and landfill of ninety-four thousand, for their total expected costs next year of three point one million.
Before you move on from that, um wha- what's your description of of this fund?
The admin fund, so this is the fund that, well, for one, it is almost the parent fund of the four utility funds. It's the fund, like, the utility director has paid out of this fund. So it's any employee that um works for all four funds, not just one specific fund. It's also the utilities insurance is paid out of here. The, it's any kind of admin cost for utilities. So just like we have a central services or admin costs in the general fund, this is utilities administrative costs.
Okay, does any of this get transferred to the general fund?
Yep, I will, next slide. Do you want to wait or do you want me to tell you?
Please, please proceed.
Okay. Okay, so where does the utility money go? So of the three point one million, nine hundred and fifty thousand is admin just personnel. So this is the utility director, the utility analyst, portion of the GIS analysts, the department secretary, and a small portion of some of the general fund employees that directly assist utilities. Central services, that one point three five million, is the one million that's transferred to the general fund and also their insurance costs. And billing and collection is eight hundred and thirty-six thousand, which is the printing for utility bills and all the employees. Is that?
Well, my my concern is, and it's been an ongoing concern of mine, that the one point three five million, um you know, I I understand, and again, this really isn't a question for you, but the, my question is, um that this money is stated to be what the city needs from the utilities uh for the work that they do for the utilities. So we've got another eight hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in billing and collection, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So those.
In administration. Um and I know it's been said in the past that, well, we just take a percentage of whatever the funds are.
There's an agreement for that million twenty-five that'll be transferred for indirect costs to the general fund. So utilities does not have their own payroll, they don't prepare their own budgets. There, they don't have the city clerk recording all their minutes. That, all the functions that the general fund supplies for utilities, which I've done an analysis recently, that's much higher than a million dollars for the time spent.
I I would appreciate if that analysis could be uh forwarded so that we can take a look at it, because this has been an ongoing issue with money that flows out of the utility fund into the general fund. And in the past, what was said was, oh, it's just a percentage that, you know, we think is fair. Um so if you've done an analysis, I would absolutely be interested in taking a look at that.
I'll I'll send it out after this meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, and another portion of that is IT. Um utilities doesn't pay for their utility billing software or any of their IT software. So that's also part of that million dollars.
All right.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to electric. Okay, where electric money comes from. So charge for services is projected to be sixteen point four million dollars. And then transfers in for voter-approved capital improvement fund of six hundred thousand dollars, for a total of sixteen point nine funds available for electric in fiscal year twenty-two. So that charge for services is reduced by the three percent. We know it's not approved, but just to be fiscally conservative, in case it is approved, we want to make sure we have enough revenues to do the budget.
And by that, you're referring to a possibility of a rate decrease?
Yes.
In that fund?
Yes.
Thank you.
And where the electric money goes, so operations, uh three point three eight million. Just purchasing power is about six million dollars. Non-electric, which includes maintenance on the streetlights. Capital projects of three point seven five million, transfers to the utility admin of one point seven eight million, and depreciation of one point one million. So total expenses for the utility fund will be sixteen point two million. Moving on to water, so the charge for services is nine point nine million. The infrastructure tax is eight hundred thousand dollars. And this is reduced compared to fiscal year twenty, and we do see it going up, but we still still see it about seven percent less than it originally was. So transfers in from voter-approved capital improvement fund, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and a use of fund balance of four point six million of the water fund. So total funding for the water fund will be sixteen point one million dollars. Now, where the water fund money goes, so operations is one point six million. Just purchasing the water is four point six million. Capital projects is one point four million. Debt service is four point five million. So again, this is so high because we're taking that two point three million dollar bond reserve to pay down our principal faster. Um so when we originally refinanced, it was projected that we pay off, pay, the loan would be paid off, or sorry, the bond would be paid off in um twenty thirty-two. And now with our additional payments, we're expecting to pay off within twenty-eight or twenty-nine, depending on the payments.
And that, uh, this amount that you've budgeted for this year on that, uh, that's kind of a one-time payment, right? So when the bonds were procured, uh, there was an agreement, I believe it was a year or two, that uh we could not prepay. But now we've reached that point, and with the fund balance, we're able to make a lump sum payment that will further reduce the number of years to be paid.
Yep, so it'll reduce the number of years because we'll pay, make our payments faster. So June twenty twenty-two is the first time we can make the initial payment. And then because our prior bond had the rule that we had to keep that bond reserve at two point three million, so rather than releasing that two point three million, we kept it on hold for when, June twenty-two, when we can actually pay down this debt.
And when we talk about this debt specifically, it's the raw water line.
Mm-hmm.
There, I mean, it it's not like a general kind of bond that was done for capital improvement projects. It's one specific project that was done, and that's the raw water line.
True.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, and then, so transfer to utility admin fund of nine hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, amortization of one point six million dollars, and depreciation of one point three million dollars for total expenses of sixteen point one million dollars. So moving on to wastewater, where the money comes from. So customer charges is two million dollars. Um transfers in from voter-approved capital improvement fund is three hundred thousand dollars, and use of fund balance is six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, so total funding of two point nine million. So where the wastewater money goes? Eight hundred and ninety-one thousand is going to operations. One point one five million is going to capital projects. Transfer to utility admin fund is three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars and depreciation of six hundred and one thousand dollars. So total expenses of two point nine million. Landfill, customer charges of one point three five million. Restricted revenue, which includes the construction fee and landfill closure fee of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, for a total of one point six million dollars. And so where the landfill money goes? Contractual services of one point one, one point one seven million. Transfers to the admin fund of ninety-four thousand dollars and depreciation of twenty thousand dollars. So total expenses of one point two million. So again, as I said in the other slides, uh, or I might have forgot to say about water. So we did reduce the electric fund revenues by the three percent, um possible um rate reduction, just to, in case it happens, so we're ready for it. And it, water's revenue is also reduced by the ten dollar service fee reduction. Now, I'm gonna turn it over to the utilities director.
Mr. Porter? Uh, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I just want to highlight a few areas where we're making some changes or requesting some additions to the budget, uh effectively to do some improvements within the utility itself. The first one, which is shown up here, is for us to purchase a formal asset management program for the utility. With the utility of our size and our scope, uh, we should be beyond the years where we are with a formal asset management program. That includes a computerized maintenance management system where we can more effectively schedule uh maintenance activities such as flushing hydrants, fire hydrant maintenance, you know, manhole rehabilitation and rehab and inspections and all these things right now, frankly, that our guys do manually, either by spreadsheets or um whatever tools they have at their, uh, you know, right now that they, where in this case, it'd be much more effective, much more efficient. We can do better inventory control, we can do better inventory management. It's a cheap um way to be more efficient with the work we do today. And so I'm highly recommending that we add that to the budget. Um that would be around sixty thousand dollars. This would be something that we could also share with Public Works. I didn't even think about it earlier, we might even share it with Parks and Recreation. But that's one of the changes.
Is that anticipated to be a one-time cost?
It would have a one-time cost for development and implementation. It would have a one-time cost for development and implementation. It would have an annual licensing cost that's probably more in the range of $20,000 to $30,000 a year. I would assume we'd split that between the utility fund and the general fund.
Thank you.
On the electric side, we've got a few changes. So I, I think, as everybody knows in this room, the world's changing really rapidly. We are modifying our engineer, energy portfolio for energy resources as we speak, moving forward with regards to solar and other things that are happening in the environment. And so it's time for us to update our integrated resources plan from electrical perspective. We do need some assistance from a consulting perspective to do that work. We're obviously getting way more rooftop solar, frankly, than I thought we would be achieving in the community itself. We're bringing in some newer contracts with, through IBV Energy and the Southern Nevada Water Authority. And then just the fact that lake levels are dropping and we don't know what's going to happen in the future, we just need to take a look at that. And so we've added $50,000 for that in the electric budget. One of the other things that we have been trying to address, because we have heard and we are listening to council, the Utility Advisory Committee, and even some folks out in the public, our ability to get the projects out the door and get them designed and constructed in a more effective and more efficient manner. I know it's hard sometimes when you look at the budget and these projects are slow in one year, but sometimes they take one year, sometimes they take one and a half years, sometimes they take two years. But we are, you know, and if you look historically, you can see data there that shows that it's taken time to get some of these done. What we're suggesting here is that we reinstate the electrical engineer, which is currently unfunded, but is in the full, is in the staff complement, and reclassify that as a project engineer slash project manager. That person we would hire to basically help us get those projects out the door. We're pretty good on the construction side, but frankly, we have one guy in the city engineer, and we have one technician, and hopefully with the funding of some of those other positions in public works and the addition of this project manager, as well as we utilize Colorado River Commission support to help on some of the larger projects, we would hope this would be a method, means and method to get those projects done more effectively. In order to do that, since we would not have an electrical engineer, and since we haven't had an electrical engineer, and frankly, what we've been able to do is manage that internally over the last couple of years. But going forward, there are going to be, there still is going to be a need for some professional electrical engineering services. So we're requesting an additional $75,000 to basically do an on-call contract to assist when needed, when we have things that are outside of our scope, which, you know, I, I may have PE after my name, but it doesn't say electrical PE. So there are odd times when we need those services, so. And there's going to be more times coming up in the future than there has been in the last two years. On the water side? Unfortunately, when COVID hit, we were about two hours from filling up a position in the water and wastewater maintenance as a water wastewater maintenance worker. We stopped that. We're, you know, we've had this discussion. We, we want to put that position back in place. We have a significant backlog in hydrant flushing, hydrant maintenance, sewer manhole maintenance, all these activities that, you know, we do the best we can, but we're, we're playing catch-up and reinstating this position will help. Actually, Angela already mentioned the, the bond issue, the bond reserve to help pay down the debt. In addition, there will be, we've, we've put into the financial plan and the financial model an additional $600,000 annually that would go towards additional principal. So that helps with that buy-down. On the wastewater, same thing. That guy is half-water, half-wastewater, so they would help out on the wastewater side as well.
And again, when you refer to the water fund, you're still taking into consideration the potential service line decrease that Ms. Mannan mentioned earlier?
That is correct. We, you know, full well knowing this hasn't gone to, it's just a recommendation, the rate study, and eventually something will come to you, actually soon in March from the advisory committee. We thought it was best included in the budget because that's better than if we didn't include it. But yeah, it's still up to city council to decide what to do with that.
Thank you.
On the, with regards to wastewater on the operating side, we have, we continue to be challenged with the televising and inspection of our sewer lines. We identified this during our condition assessment study. We do the best we can with the budget we have, but we're continuing to play catch-up. And so I've added $100,000 in the, in the wastewater maintenance budget to help us play catch-up. And frankly, it won't help us get there, but it's a good start. And we'll assess it as we move forward.
Councilmember Adams? This is just from my knowledge. When you say televise, what does that mean?
It's exactly what it means. So there are, you know, if we were a big utility, we would probably own and do that ourselves. There are TV trucks, if you will, that have little robots with cameras on them, and they go into the sewer lines and they are able to, by distance and by the video, you can inspect for cracks, root intrusions, deterioration, corrosion, all those things. There's a system in place you can do to rate the condition of the sewer. That's the kind of information that would go into that asset management system I talked about. And we've been able to plan more effectively for future capital improvement replacement projects or upgrade projects.
Thank you. Like I said, I, I just wasn't familiar with that term, and I guess it is exactly what it sounds like and also much more.
Cameras in the sewer lines and-
And potentially with our new video system, we might be able to livestream some of that.
I'd be more than happy to share some of that video. You can watch the cockroaches doing the backstroke. If you really want to see that.
Not particularly.
Is this where you take that, or am I on this one? Any questions for me before I hand it back off to you?
Questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, thank you. Do you have any dollar amounts for the electrical engineers, the water and wastewater? The dollar amounts for their personnel, if we're going to reinstate the electrical engineer?
The water wastewater maintenance is in the budget. I just don't have it with me. We can certainly get that for you unless you have-
Someone has it.
Oh, move it up. We got it right here. I can't see it. Supervisor, supervisor, supervisor. Plan operator crew leader, I'm finding everything but that one position. I'm not seeing it. I'm not seeing it right offhand, but a water and sewer technician is in the $29 to $34, $35 range, so it'd be less than that, slightly less than that. Here it is. I found it. So it's 2771 to 3325 at the upper step per hour. Sorry, I did find it. Thank you. With regards to the project engineer, project manager, we actually are going to have to develop that job, job description and come up with a salary range for that. But it would be, obviously, it would be less than the city engineer makes and most likely less than what the current electrical engineer position is. There's just a higher demand for electrical engineers and the salaries are typically higher. With regard to the contract out services, we, frankly, we just made some estimates that we would need between 10 to 20 hours a week, which would result basically in a part-time type on-call service. And so the $75,000 is exactly that. It's somewhat of a guess because we know it's going to be cyclical throughout the year, depending on what the need is. So it is exactly what it is. It's a estimate.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Porter.
You're welcome.
He not only wants a new engineer, he wants some extra equipment there.
Apparently. Okay. And so as Denton has discussed, the FD count for utilities and actually all our enterprise funds will stay the same. The only change would be reclassifying the electrical engineer to a project manager, project engineer. So total of 35 in all of enterprise with a one personable employee. And this brings us back to our budget calendar. So again, February 10th, here we are, the first special meeting. 2/24, or February 24th, we'll have the operation meeting with the citizens. 3/10 will be the operation and CIP budget meeting, which we can determine if the 4/28 meeting is necessary. April 15th, we'll be submitting, I'll be submitting the tentative budget to the state. 4/28, if there's a meeting, we'll all be here. May 15th, I'll publish the public hearing for the budget meeting on the 25th, which is of May, which is during the city council meeting. And again, any changes that are needed really needs to be before that final meeting because there is no time to make changes after we meet. And answer any questions?
Questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, I'm sorry. I forgot. I've got a couple of questions that I forgot to ask. And one is the inter-fund salary reimbursement. Could you explain that? I noticed it's always a minus with each different fund. I have an idea, but I'm not sure.
You'll see it in the enterprise funds as an actual debit. So that's where the expense happens. So it's a reimbursement from the enterprise funds to the general fund. So how we discussed, the 1 million 25 from the utilities is a portion of that. So it's the credit that's going back to those different departments for assisting those other groups. So also, you'll see one that's an inter-fund expense, which is for software costs inside the IT budget.
Thank you. And I had one other thing. I did ask about part-time employees that were, it won't probably be your question, but that were 32 hours and they weren't less than the 40. And there are seven employees, and I was just wondering, they don't get insurance. They get the perks, but not the insurance, correct?
True.
I was just wondering if we only have seven. I, I hate to think that people-
There's, there's more than that because we have part-time personable employees. We have, it's 12.8, and they all count as a 0.8 of a person. So the council, you guys are all considered a part-time personable employee, so that's five of them. The judge is a part-time personable employee. And then there's also, I believe, there's one in utility billing and the, oh my gosh.
Well, I'm referring to those that are 32 hours. So, okay, we're considered 32 hours?
You're considered a part-time personable employee, so we pay into your retire.
Okay. Well, my point was that if we only, if we had just a few, and they were 32, I'm sure we could find something for them to do to bring them up to 40 so that they could have insurance. I, I know that insurance may not be important to some people, but I know it's very important to a lot. So I just wanted us to think about that.
We could look into the cost of that, but it would, I know you're only saying insurance on seven people, but you're also, there's a lot of other costs that would be included in that.
Definitely, definitely. But I, I just think it would be interesting, and maybe if we possibly could afford to do it, I think it would be a good thing to do because a lot of people don't have insurance. And yes, yeah, maybe their spouse or their friend or whoever can cover them, but I'd like to have that looked into if you could. Thank you.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, I'm just curious. Then under the cemetery fund, we don't talk about that much. I'm really curious what opening and closing is. The visual in my mind is probably quite different than what it really is, but-
The sale of opening and closing, it is, it is digging the hole, basically. Am I correct, Keegan, in like, or purchasing the plot? Yep. So it's basically the plot purchase, so it's opening the ground and-
Closing the ground?
Yep.
Okay, I, I just couldn't figure out what-
Yep.
-what that was, so.
We could call it plot, maybe. I don't know. I guess there could be a better-
I believe they're called graves.
I guess that'd be, but they're not all in graves. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Fuldus?
Thank you. I just want to thank everyone for the, the work they do putting these together and putting these clerk's office, I think, helps putting these packages together. No? Okay, so finance, doing all these, all these binders for all of us to be able to have. And I didn't, I didn't have a lot of questions today. I just wanted to really listen and see, but I might have, I'll have a lot more hopefully on the next one. But, but I just wanted to say thank you to this, to staff for all the work that they've provided. And hopefully we don't have a pandemic between the next meeting.
With that, I also have to thank Crystal from the city manager's office because there is no way I could have got all these binders together without her help. So thank her.
Yeah, and I, I want to say thank you as well. You know, Mr. Mays has modified this process. I think we're, you know, the timeline that Ms. Mannan has set out here gives us an opportunity to, just as Councilmember Fuldus said, you know, sometimes it, we're, I can be a little slow and it takes a while to sink in. So I think we're, we have a better process here this year, but we, we all need to understand, I'm sure, that, you know, we will get to a date certain, and that may be 4/28 or it may be earlier than that. You know, if you go beyond that date, trying to expect the budget to be reworked is probably-
Very labor-intensive.
Yes. So Ms. Pelletier, Ms. Mannan, Mr. Mays, all the directors, thank you all very much. This has been very helpful for me, and hopefully we'll get this wrapped up here in a couple of months.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're adjourned. Oh, excuse me. Final public comment period. This is our public, final public comment period. Comment during this period may be on any subject. The phone number to call in is 702-589-9629.
Yes, I have a public comment. Yes, again, for the record, council, Fred Volz. I'd like to react to four of the conversations you had this afternoon. First of all, a logical extension of the discussion about increasing EMS fees would be for Boulder City to also charge for each police call it responds to in person and each fire it puts out. We spend roughly one-third of general city funds on public safety, not including capital improvement projects. Yet those who need EMS services are being asked to pay even more than they already do through taxes. No subsidy program or subscription program makes this situation right for someone who needs help. One proposed budget category that has inadequate funding is animal control, which is Budget 10530 and within that line 5102 for professional fees. When an injured animal is taken in by animal control, veterinarian services are needed. The half-year fiscal year 2021 expense was $7,131, but the full fiscal year 2021 budget is only $10,000. And the proposed fiscal year '22 budget is only $12,200. This budget needs to be increased to at least $16,000 for fiscal year 2022. Even the $16,000 may still be insufficient to provide medical care to injured animals, given their unpredictable nature. Regarding the neighborhood community garden portion of today's discussion, replacing ornamental turf parks with community gardens may decrease water usage. The potential locations need to be identified, but firm interest needs to be expressed by potential participants before proceeding. but firm interest needs to be expressed by potential participants before proceeding. Also, if there are going to be city charges, just as the current dog park incurs, that should be disclosed as well. Gardeners are likely to be apartment or condominium dwellers who lack yard space for gardening. They need to be targeted in asking for expressions of interest. And finally, the Utility Advisory Committee received a copy of the central services charges titled "General Fund Utility Assistance." Many of the guestimates for time far exceed what would realistically be used by the utility department as there has been no actual logging of time, nor should there be, given the costs involved. The spreadsheet council will ultimately receive shows $1,988,251, which has been mysteriously reduced to $1,025,000 without any justification for doing so. Since finance didn't show up at last Wednesday's meeting, the spreadsheet and the 2022 operations budgets never received any attention. And I would ask that these comments be added verbatim. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, this is our final public comment period. Comment may be on any issue. The phone number to call is 702-589-9629. Again, the final public comment period. The phone line is available. The number is 702-589-9629. Madam City Clerk, were there any emails or voicemails?
Yes, there's one email.
Please go ahead.
Dear Mayor McAnus and council members, as Boulder City residents for over 25 years, we are extremely concerned to see that the mayor has placed an item on the February 23rd, 2021 agenda to remove the city clerk from her position for what appears to be appropriately performing her duty. Without getting into specifics of the underlying issue, it appears the mayor is seeking to fire a competent employee because her job duty required advising him that his actions were legally improper. We have appeared at and listened to numerous city council sessions, and Ms. Crum has always done her job in a thoroughly professional manner. My husband has served on the city's charter committee, where Ms. Crum oversaw proceedings. Her performance, again, was thoroughly professional in this smaller setting. Moreover, at a time when the city is struggling financially, one must question the judgment of a city official who attempts to pursue a personal vendetta at the expense of the city's financial well-being. We are currently going through the expensive litigation process with the former city attorney and former city manager. As taxpayers of the city, are we expected to pay for the costs of firing, rehiring, and retraining new personnel every time the mayor is given advice with which he does not agree? Are there not more pressing issues for council to consider than the mayor's displeasure with another city official? Ms. Crum has learned her job, starting as a deputy city clerk, and rose to the position of city clerk over the last decade. If she is unfit for her position, why has there been no public outcry throughout that period of time? Ms. Crum has performed her job admirably under several administrations. To consider termination over this is irresponsible and will subject the city to further waste of resources. Thank you for your time. Lori and Bob Junta. And that was the only written comment.
Thank you. Again, this is our final public comment period. The phone number is 702-589-9629. All right, hearing no others, we will close the final public comment period. Again, thank you to all the staff members who contributed to all of this. And now we're adjourned.